Is anybody hungry or thirsty? Do you need to?
Who's inside of me?
Um, what the fuck?
Why are you?
Okay. Um, uh, Trevor, 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 listen, I like you, but I don't like you that much, alright?
Trevor's assaulting me.
Um, okay, guys, uh, if you're hungry, uh, let me know. I've got a bit of food on me, uh, otherwise, go ahead and, you know, get, get yourself a drink, okay? And let me know when you're ready, okay?
I mean, I can go get some food, man. I got me, my, my wife carries a lot of fucking food. She cooks all the fucking time, man.
That's a good lady to marry right there.
Why, why you think I'm fucking married to her?
Uh, well, good point, man.
Alright, well, I do, uh, I do want to thank everybody for being here. I'm Rob Strange, the mayor of this town. Of course, you know me. Um, we want-
I don't really fucking know you.
Yeah.
Well, Randall, as time goes on, we will get to know each other, alright? Um, I'm here with my, uh, two council members. We have, uh, Dende Smalls, who is also the business partner with me and, uh, in, uh, Club Backseat. And we have, uh, Dylan Jimmy's, the chief of police.
Um.
Hello.
Now-
Take off the winter cap!
As our, as our first order of business here, um, we had a tragedy happen where the previous mayor and, uh, owner of, uh, the bank, uh, lost his life recently, and we do, we did make a tomb for him at the top, but, uh, we did talk unofficially about Trimmer taking over, uh, the Bank of Swank. Uh, and since his law firm is so close to the bank, Trimmer has requested that the Bank of Swank and his law firm be, uh, combined into one. I myself agree with this. I want to hear what the people have to say about this.
Okay. Yeah.
I know you haven't, I, alright, everybody's good with that? Okay, we'll pass that action then.
Alright.
Hello, sir. Hello, sir? Are, are you okay? Hello?
Hello?
Uh-
We're not the fucking home ball, yeah?
This is why we build walls.
Exactly, exactly. Which brings us to our second point, the walls. Um, I myself and Dende Smalls have, uh, talked about this. Uh, there are a couple of, uh, things we do want to mention here. First of all, we want to know what the people think about the texture and styling of the wall, what we want there. Uh, Dende and I have talked a bit about maybe doing a smooth chiseled brick layer, much like you see here, maybe, maybe a little bit different, uh, to build this wall, so it's aesthetically pleasing to the eye and still yet effective. Uh, anybody have any tips or ideas as far as what they want to see? Jackie, thank you for the follow, I appreciate that.
Uh, barbed wire at the top.
Barbed wire at the top, okay?
That's actually, uh, that's actually what I was about to, uh, uh, offer up. Um, maybe we put, uh, no, I told you during the, uh, the debates that I had contacts with a guy named Mr. Cray who, uh, makes a lot of furniture and stuff that we have here in, in town, and, uh, he just came, uh, to me and told me that, um, he's still willing to bring us the, um, the electric fences. So, maybe we could include that on the very top and then, you know, have the wall there just in case.
You know, I think, uh, I think this is a brilliant idea. Um, it would, uh, it would ensure, it would both bring, uh, the ideas from Demi's party for the election and my own party, and combine them to further, uh, secure our town and make it safe for us and our children to grow in. Um, anybody disagree with this? Everybody agree, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll pass that motion, and, uh, the wall will be made out of smooth stone with a top layer of barbed wire. The next course of action here is the wall itself. Now, money-wise, I will be putting in as much as I possibly can from my very own pocket to help the security of this town. Uh, I know Dende is going to help with the labor. Uh, we may have to go into the taxpayer puns, uh, funds if we are going to put a fence at the top of this that's going to be electrified. Now, Mr. Cray, I don't know, I, I haven't spoke with him yet. I wanted to speak with the townspeople themselves. Uh, I don't know what Mr. Cray charges, but we may have to dip into that. I want to know if anybody has an issue with this. It does not mean an increase in taxes. It means that we will dip into the surplus that was left by Melvin and his amazing mayor skills. Does anybody have a problem with this?
Well, it's none of my money, so I could give a rat's ass.
Alright, if everybody agrees with this, say aye.
Aye.
That's one.
One aye.
That's only one aye.
Aye!
Aye, that's two.
I've noticed this, um.
As a matter of fact, neither is Randall. That's a fifty-fifty. We'll turn to the council members here. What do you have to say?
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with-
Yep.
Alright, so we'll pass that motion. We will dip into the surplus for this. Um, which-
I have a question.
Yes, Aiden.
Speaking of the whole citizenship thing, seeing as how my house is outside the city borders, would I account as a citizen still?
Uh, Aiden, that is a very good question. We're going to get to that, actually, because we do have a topic specified for citizenship, so, uh, if you want to bring that question back up when we get to that, then we will answer that for you. Um, we do want to move forward here. Uh, aside from the wall, what we wanted to take the rest of the surplus for was some enhancements to the town. Now, we did get rid of the garden outside of, uh, Club Backseat. We've moved that. We want to flatten this area up front, right over here, next to the, next to Keith's house and, uh, where the previous garden was. What we want to do here is we want to build both a town center for people to post jobs, for people to post events, for people to have reminders of festivals that are coming up and birthdays and other such things. And we also want to build a park so that people can come, bring their families, relax and socialize. We want to know your input, if you have any ideas and what you would like to see out of this.
Yeah, I like parks.
I mean, yeah.
Alright. Well, uh, this is the last thing that we'd be doing with, uh, with the Dimco company as far as construction goes. What we will end up doing is we will be moving the town hall. The town hall will go further into the business district with everything else. I'm thinking, Dylan, I know we didn't talk about this, uh, but, uh, I'm thinking that perhaps we move the town hall next to where we have the, uh, stage at. For elections and such, it'll be just that much closer.
Yes, that's actually what I was, uh, uh, planning to do. Um, I was going to put it in a little, uh, right there beside the, uh, the smelt tree over there, move some stuff around and it should fit perfectly.
Perfect, perfect. Um, next order of business, uh, since seeing as that's going to, uh, going to be fine, the next order of business we do have here is, uh, we have to get real here. Neither of us, none of us are going to live forever. And when that situation happens, we need people like Trevor here to be able to create certain wills for people and the things that they own for when they eventually do pass over. Aside from just that, we know that Trevor is our man for that job. We need someplace to remember our dead so that they're never forgotten. We need a spot for a graveyard. Where would you, the citizens of Lakeview, like to see the graveyard? Would you like to see it further outside of town?
I vote for the other side of the frozen lake.
The other side of the frozen lake?
Put in the ground?
I, I saw an abandoned building over there. Maybe you can just tear that down, put that there.
It's a good idea. Where, you know, Chad's old-
That would actually be a good, uh-
Who the fuck's Chad?
Yeah, who, who's this Chad you're talking about?
Uh, it's, it's Melvin's nickname. I used to call him that every once in a while.
Man, what a stupid ass name.
Yeah, fucking Chad sounds like an asshole.
Um-
Let's not disrespect Melvin now.
Yeah, let's, 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 let's respect the dead.
No, 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 we're not disrespecting him. We're just saying, the nickname, the name Chad just sounds like it, it, it doesn't do Melvin justice.
Getting back on topic, I believe that, uh, bulldozing the house and creating a memorial there, not, not a memorial, but a graveyard there would be a good, a good memorial for Melvin himself. I know that we did bury him on top of the bank, but, uh, he was a founding, uh, father of this town and, and we do want to show him respect. Please get back on the other side, Ross. Alright.
He's a fucking invisible fucker.
As far as building goes, um, that is the end of that portion of our meeting here. We will move on, and the next thing we're going to talk about here is citizenship. Now, up until this morning, we only had one person that we knew of near us, aside from the, uh, the indigenous villagers that we've, uh, come across. Uh, and that is Ross. Ross is not a member of our town. Um, but now, we have Randall, and Randall is living outside of town with his family, um, also not a member of our town. We want to know how the people feel about new people moving in, new citizenship, how we should handle it, and, uh, and how safe you feel bringing people in, what you would like to see.
Uh, the two people you're talking about are foreigners and they're right here, so I'm going to say it's a pretty biased decision. I say you should allow them in.
I say so too.
Alright.
Sure.
That is if they wish.
Alright. Counsel?
I just recommend extreme vetting.
Hey, man. I already got all my shots.
So, here's, here's the thing. With, uh, with Randall and with Ross, we will gladly accept them in, seeing as the citizens say yes to it. Us as the councilmen, I'm, I'm totally fine with it. Um, what I do say for the future is that we need to have some sort of, uh, limitation. We need some sort of, uh, background check, which Dylan, as the chief of police, I expect you to be able to take care of. And also, I hope you can go take care of that.
Yeah.
Ronnie.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
What's going on out there?
Uh, I don't, I'm not really sure. Um, what we want to have is some sort of, uh, background check, so we know that the people we're allowing in our town are not dangerous. Um, Aiden, you are a citizen of Lakeview, as long as you want to be, you will always be a citizen of Lakeview, and even though your house is outside the borders, you are a member and a resident of this, of this town.
Okay.
Uh, citizenship in the future, I believe we do need to put a tax on it. Um, not citizens as they are, but bringing in citizens to get citizenship. I believe, uh, a citizenship fee, uh, should be somewhere around maybe a hundred dollars. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. My hand slipped.
Ow.
Tourette's. Thought you wanted water. Um, I, I believe about a hundred dollars, uh, in a background check for a citizenship should be a, uh, a good, good thing. It'll, uh, give us a little bit of surplus so that we may enhance the town further. Um, and we will be, uh, most certain of the people that we do bring in.
Um, question?
Yes, Randall.
Now, well, what if you don't actually own any money?
Well, see, uh, Trevor can speak to you about that after the meeting here. Um, the Bank of Swank actually allows you, after opening an account, a one thousand dollar investment into it, so you do, you do come out with a thousand dollars for just opening an account there.
Nope.
Oh, well, it's not nifty.
Dude, you can thank our former mayor for that, and, uh, show him your respect when you walk into that bank.
Sounds like a cool old guy.
Let's see, we've covered the walls, we've covered the park, the center, and moving the town hall. We've cut, uh, covered citizenship. Um, I do believe our last thing is opening up for questions. Does anybody have any questions?
I have something.
Aiden?
It's more of a, uh, suggestion and a plan. If, uh, what was the, uh, new guy's name? The bear?
That's Randall.
Alright, so let's say Randall becomes a citizen. Are we going to build a road towards his farm?
I'd rather he didn't.
Here's the thing. Citizenship does not mean that you actually have to live within the borders. You can live wherever you want. But being a citizen just, being a citizen just allows you access for once this wall is built, for we will have coded doors to keep out strangers, to keep out the dangerous monsters, but for allowing free transport of, um, citizens and their goods.
What was that?
I'm not really sure.
Sorry, I stepped on my wand.
Oh.
Anyway.
Can I, can I bring up a topic here?
Yes, Dylan, go ahead.
Uh, so there's been a topic, uh, that's been going around ever since, uh, Melvin was, uh, was mayor, but, um, the topic is, uh, having to pay for licenses, uh, for a business as well as building licenses or permits. Um, I wanted to get, uh, your, your thoughts on that. I know it's, you know, you guys want to open up your businesses and you guys want to build, um, but, you know, if it does become something that you have to pay for, um, you know, it, it'll go straight towards the towns' funds to, uh, create stuff like these, uh, these walls that we're wanting to, uh, to make and, uh, you know, moving this town hall and stuff like that, so I wanted to open that up for questions, comments and concerns here.
Let me, uh, let me start here real quick. You, you do bring up a very valid concern, Dylan, and that is actually a topic that I almost forgot about. I have, uh, completed a rough draft of what our, uh, laws, set in indeed by, uh, Melvin. I have done a little revising and editing myself. I wanted to open that up to everybody so we knew kind of what the laws were, uh, what we couldn't, couldn't do, and the types of, uh, money we're looking for as far as business permits and stuff go. Um, as far as my first draft, let me just, uh, go ahead and pull this up real quick.
Well, bye, guys. Oh, it looks like you are thirsty too.
Yeah, go ahead and take yourself a break real quick. If you guys need food or water, uh, go ahead and get it, and, uh, we'll continue here in just a second after a short recess.
Awesome. Don't piss, man.
Is that what I think it is?
Uh, it's tea.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, tea.
Sounds good.
Delicious. Sweet tea.
What about sweet tea?
Oh, nothing. We're just talking about things, you know?
Oh, okay. I get you.
Nice hat, by the way, Randall. I like it.
Yeah. Got it. You know what? Where are them fucking sheeps in my farm? They're just wearing this fucking thing, like, who puts a hat on a sheep? Really fucked up, man.
I don't know, man.
There's some villagers out there that, uh, ended some weird things, you know, but we don't judge them.
We don't judge them. We can't, but, uh-
Crazy fucks.
Alright, um, Russ. Alright, that's good enough. Oh, okay. Shit, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, is everybody back up? We're still missing, uh, Trevor. Um, just-
I was just, I was just looking at Invisible Man here. He just looks fucking ridiculous with that, with glasses on. I'm sorry for judging Invisible Man. I, I don't even know what you even look like.
Hey, does, uh, does anybody have any, uh, ink sacs on them? Two ink sacs?
Oh shit, well, that's what you look like.
It's really hard to maintain this form. Keeping the ring under control uses up a lot of magic.
Oh, well, I don't know nothing about that magic shit.
Alright, alright. Alright, I hope everybody's, uh, good now. We're going to, uh, go ahead and continue here. I want to bring up a few different things. We will be having a law book being published. I'll make, uh, copies of that and eventually, I hope to have a library up where we can have that and other books written by not only, uh, not only other authors, but, uh, also you, the townspeople. Um, on town hall, uh, bored outside of town hall, I'm thinking, Dylan, if we can make that or something, I'm sure we can come up with. Um, I would like to post the current laws and, and, uh, and, and so everybody can just, you know, walk by and, and keep up to date with them. Um, the wall, we're going to have, uh, code lock doors, which every citizen will know. I know I brought that up a little bit earlier, but, uh, every citizen will know that, so you'll be able to get in and out. Um, we're going to build a cemetery. I would also like to see a courthouse built here so that we can have a fair trial for any, uh, any people that are, uh, arrested, just to make sure we find them guilty or innocent with a trial by their peers. Um, moving on to what Dylan was talking about before we went on our recess, the business licenses. Now, as far as the town, the town does not make much profit. We would like to see a little bit of surplus here. Uh, business licenses, business takes up land, and, uh, there is a little bit of a cost for that. I'm thinking that an initial cost for a business license would be three hundred dollars without any expiration. So, you would be able to sell your business, you would be able to run your businesses however long you would. The expiration date on the license would be forever. Three hundred dollars upfront, you get yourself some business. Now, the already established businesses, of course, you wouldn't have to pay that. It was before your time, so your grandfather did. Does anybody have any ideas about this? Would you like to see the price higher, lowered, or what would you like to see out of it? Expiration date's nine, let me know.
I personally agree.
Door!
Alright. This would help for renovation and repairs as far as the town goes, um, which would, uh, keep us in good shape, so everybody that agrees, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, we'll pass that motion, and three hundred dollars per business license will come into effect as one of the laws. Um, Dylan, is there anything else you wanted to cover here as far as, uh, pricing and such? I know you brought it up.
Uh, we could talk about, uh, who would they need to talk to? They need to talk to you, Chris.
As far as the business permit goes, I believe that you would, uh, draw that up, um, with Trimmer, give him the three hundred dollars as far as being the banker, uh, and then he would bring that to me. I would sign it and then it would go into effect.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Uh, let's see here, moving on, as far as the elections goes, it was a little, uh, a little hazy as far as, uh, Dylan and I going into that election. Um, Melvin was our first mayor. He was kind of, uh, elected by the people themselves, and we didn't really have a debate. Uh, as far as the future goes, with our town, as it increases in size, these, this is subject to change, but I have it set as three participants max per election. Elections will happen, um, three participants, two, uh, mayor debates will happen at this point on the stage by the town hall where it will be moved to. There will be one eliminate, elimination per debate. You will not vote for who is going to win. You will vote for who you want kicked off of the debate. The last member left will become the new mayor. So, we will have three participants max, two mayor debates. Of course, it would be one di- mayor debate if it's one versus one, and then if the, the person has no opposing runner, then they would automatically be reined in as the new mayor. Um-
Sounds like fucking Highlander, man.
And fucking Highlanders, it should. You can rerun. Uh, as far as it goes right now, I don't have anything in the law book as far as a, uh, limit on terms. Uh, since everything is decided by the people, it would be just, you know, whoever runs and what the people decide. In favor of this, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah, it can only be one.
I agree too. Counsel?
Aye.
Alright, motion is passed on the elections. Alright, we'll go into the, uh, laws here a little bit. I'll go through this quickly. It's not very much right now. We're still kind of, uh, in the editing process of this. Fuck me, god damn it. Eight people in, that's the most we've had.
Uh-
Sorry, I fell over a little bit. It was really weird. Um, okay, anyway, like I was saying, the laws.
Um-
He's still gone.
Nah, man, he's run, oh god! What's happening?
Wow, that was really weird.
He also-
What's happening to him?
What's happening?
Fucking squirrely man's possessed.
Uh, he vanished for me. Oh, no, he's back. And he's gone.
What's happening?
This is why we need a wall.
This is why, yeah. I agree.
Yeah. Exactly.
There, we need a wall. We need a wall now.
We need a wall now!
Point number-
Please brutality on Demi's. Alright, hey Keith, you're just in time. We did, uh, we did go through a lot of different topics, but we will open the floor for questioning, so, yeah, just go ahead and take yourself a seat and we'll, uh, we'll get on to this. Uh, going over the laws here, um, we have the number one is, uh, this was, this, these were all passed by, by Melvin and, uh, Dylan before I became mayor. I did edit the sentencing a little bit, uh, so we'll go over this and see what we kind of, uh, feel as, uh, as peoples. P O D, magic mushrooms and cocaine are all five months and a two hundred and fifty dollar fine in, in prison.
Oh shit!
Now, listen to me. Mushrooms themselves are not illegal. When you have them dried with the psychoactive compound, they are illegal. So, if you want to make mushroom stew, you're good to go. But if you dry those out on a drying rack and you eat those, you could potentially be caught and thrown in prison. Number two, attempted murder, fifteen months in prison. We don't want to see that here. We don't want to have anything to do with that. Which brings us to number three, murder, twenty months. You can have yourselves-
You don't want to duel me, man. I have fucking claws.
I'll, I'll tell you this right now. You can duel anyone you s- you want outside of those borders, but when you're in this town, you guys will be peaceful with each other.
Yeah, we, we don't want any violence here, guys. We want to promote a safe environment for all of our citizens.
You want to take this out of town?
Lakeview is peace and love. Lakeview is peace and love. Number four, trespassing. First, you get a warning. The second is a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket. If you get caught a third time trespassing, it's five months in prison. Number five, attempted robbery, five months in prison also. Number six, robbery, ten months in prison will double, double your sentence. Number seven is impersonation of an L E O or a government official will get you ten months in prison and/or a fine of five hundred dollars. Number eight, entering unauthorized areas, ten months in prison and a five hundred dollar fine. Unlicensed ownership is number nine. Unlicensed ownership of business is five months and/or a fine of five hundred dollars. Most likely what we'll do in this instance is if you forgot to get your business license, as long as you're not up and running, you'll get a warning. If you're already up and running, you'll get a fine, and, uh, if, if you've been a repeat offender, then you'll probably get thrown in to prison for five months at that point. Uh, number ten, littering. Don't litter across our streets. We're spending taxpayer money to keep this stuff pristine. We want people to come in here and fall in love with this town, just like we did when we first got here. So, for littering, you get five months in prison or a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. Um,
Um.
Yes.
I just saw someone throw an orange down, but no, nevermind.
That's, I picked it up. I'm a little hungry, so.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to point out as well, Dimco is going to be, um, uh, putting down trash cans as well as lamp posts, uh, free of charge of the, of the town, so, um, that way you have no excuse of littering.
This is perfect.
I object to the marijuana. It has to be legal.
Marijuana is legal. You can, as a matter of fact, you can come to Club Backseat and get yourself marijuana of all kinds of different strains, as soon as we get it up. Uh, marijuana, marijuana, tobacco and alcohol are all legal. Uh, you're fine. You can do that in your own private time, as long as you're not harming anybody, you're fine.
Now, if you shrimps your own private home, that should be legal too, because you're not affecting anybody but yourselves.
Listen, you can go right out of town and do shrimps, as long as you're not caught by our, our citizens, our, our cops here in town, you're fine. You get out of town, you're fine. While you're in this town, we don't want that shit here. Don't- While you're in this town, we don't want that shit here. Don't bring that here. Uh, let's see here. Number 11, failure to follow an order from an LEO is a thousand dollar fine and/or five months in prison. We have to respect-
I have a question?
Yes.
Now, can I disobey an order from the LEO that wears a stupid hat?
How about the LEO's just playing stupid?
Well, I'm worried about the hat thing, man. I just, I can't trust a man in a stupid hat.
Hey, he's got a point there.
Yeah, the hat does make them mad.
Exactly.
Listen, I don't have the hat on anymore, okay?
I mean, it's almost as bad as a new era Superman hat, just to say.
Yeah, like a solid blue hat with a red bill? Oh, it's, it's almost as bad as that often.
Alright, alright, everybody. Let's get back on topic here. We, uh, we're burning daylight, alright?
Daylight's dark out.
What the hell is that?
Number 12, raking and entering, ten months. Number 13, flinging and looting, ten months. Fourteen, destruction of government property is five hundred fine or five months in jail. Uh, fifteen, possession of illegal substances, five months. Which we already have that. Uh, yeah, he, uh, yeah, yeah. Just ignore it. Um, and of course, our last one here, these will all be posted for everybody in the future, is selling or intent to sell illegal substances is ten months in jail. Um, alright. This is one thing, this next topic is one thing I really want all of your input on, uh, because this is gonna affect the town as a whole. Now, this is holidays. For me, a holiday season will last three months and we can have festivals whenever we feel like it. But I have it categorized and cut into four segments here. The first three months are the spring festival time. The next three months are the summer festival time. Then we have the autumn festival and the winter festival at the end. Do you, if you guys wanna see smaller festivals, uh, or anything, we can try to add those in. Uh, this is why I want in the town center to have a bulletin board for people to post different events like birthdays and, and parties and such that they're having. That way we can, uh, we can get set up at any time with that. But as far as the major holidays, right now in the law books, we have it set as four different major holidays that this town celebrates. Festivals, yeah, I know, right?
Will there be fireworks at these festivals?
There will be heavily guarded fireworks. We had a situation recently where we lost a very founding member, our very own Melvin Swank, to a horrible accident with fireworks. We will be putting restrictions and safety protocols on firework use. They will only happen at the festivals with an LEO present.
Now, if we only have a cop, what about, uh, medical staff?
Uh, another good question there. Um, now I do wanna open up a hospital alongside, uh, all the other buildings that we were talking about. The courthouse, the graveyard area. Uh, a hospital is something I definitely wanna get done.
I feel like we've been here for a few fucking days. When is it gonna be over?
Yeah, I just got here and I feel like I've been here for a month.
Oh, look like we got another fucking, fucking action in here. Jesus, every time someone meets me, there's a fucking accent.
Now-
Don't bother, ain't got no accent. You got the accent.
Now, hold on here, hold on here. If you're gonna do the duel, you get out of town, alright? Alright, now listen, that was actually the-
I just want the goddamn pie.
That was actually, that was actually it for me. If the, uh, council members have anything else to add on, go ahead at this time, otherwise we'll open up the floor for questioning.
Uh, I just wanted to add that the, uh, the police department is going, is undergoing a change to a sheriff's department. Um, we'll be covering everything inside of this town, everything within a radius outside of this town and then, uh, every other town that, uh, is created. Um, just, uh, just wanted to point the-
Alright.
Alright, bye, honey five.
Of course, Ross, you do understand that becoming a citizenship in our town means that, uh, he does have jurisdiction over your house, uh, Aiden, he does have jurisdiction over your house and, uh, Randall's house also, so.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Now, I have a question. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a potential business owner here, you know, and, um, you know, weapons, armor and maybe some coffee. But, uh, my building's kinda small. I, I kinda need like, you know, bigger space, you know, for God and growing coffee beans.
Uh, Keith, a great question. I'll let, uh, Dylan handle this as they do, uh, handle very, uh, pristine, structural integrity, uh, moving of buildings. So, uh, if you do need a different spot, then, uh, Dylan is the man to talk to for that.
Yeah, Keith, we also have a, uh, a special building on right now. Half off all, uh, buildings you, uh, you request as well as we will cover all licenses that, uh, that need to be paid.
Alrighty, like, like I said, I wanna do, you know, make a, you know, I'm a business man, so I wanna, you know, do maybe do coffee and, you know, uh, you know, clothing, you know, armor, weaponry for, you know, hunting and the defense, you know what I'm saying? Mm-hmm.
Of course.
Yeah, absolutely. Beautiful, beautiful.
Speaking of, uh, of building and whatnot, how's, uh, what's the timeframe looking like on getting our, getting our bank into a more, uh, functional state?
Um, well, as of now, we're looking, uh, we're looking for a few months. Hopefully it won't, uh, it won't take years. That's, that's what we're planning on, but, uh, you never know, some, some stuff happens, you know, and, uh, I, I mean, anything could happen from electrical to plumbing to, you know, simple roofs not being supported or something like that.
That's my mayor hats.
Um, right now, there's really no way to give you an ETA. Um, all I can say is we're hoping to aim under a year.
Alright.
Perfect, perfect. Any other questions?
Can I finally leave? Fucking, I left my family at home for like a fucking week with no food, man.
Get on out of here, get on out of here. We're good.
They're probably dead.
Fucking thing will take fucking years. Jesus.
They're probably dead.
Alright, well, congratulations to, uh, Randall and to you, Ross, for becoming new citizens of, uh, of our town of Lakeview. Look forward to having you at, uh, some of the festivals.